Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started tonight, we have a plethora of events to do ahead of time. So, starting off, we have a Parks and Recreation Month proclamation, so I would like the representatives from Parks and Rec to come up and join me. I think blue shirts are in today, see? I got the message, too. All right. Tell us who you are.
We are the staff from the Beaver Creek Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Program. Oh, and I'm Lisa Kern.
I'm Kara Snyder.
I'm Morgan Minnick.
I'm Riley Gerhart.
I'm Katie Wood.
I'm Jordan Johnson.
I'm Meg Hemmer.
All right. Well, this is a proclamation that we're gonna do tonight, and it's a proclamation to declare Parks and Recreation Month, so I will read it to you if you don't mind. So whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of our community and build healthy, active communities, and whereas Parks and Recreation are virtually, vitally, I'm sorry, important in establishing and maintaining the quality of life and ensuring the health of all Beaver Creek citizens, and whereas Recreation builds family unity, strengthens neighborhood involvement, provides for social interaction, enhances education, develops creativity, and promotes cultural diversity. Now, that's a mouthful. You guys do all that, right? All right. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, the attraction and retention of business, and provide beauty for our community, as well as a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate. That one, for sure, I know we do well. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs strengthen and enhance our community, making Beaver Creek a safer, healthier, and more enjoyable place to live. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Beaver Creek, and encourage all residents to visit our parks and trails and participate in our programs and special events that enhance the quality of our life in Beaver Creek. So I want to thank you all for everything you do, and I'd like to present that to you. And our Parks and Rec staff obviously does a fantastic job of keeping the parks, but it's all the volunteers and the people that use the parks that really make it special. All right, do we have somebody from the census with us this evening? Randy? He'll be coming? All right. All right, so I do have a proclamation for the census, and I'll read it. Whereas the United States Census Bureau is required by the United States Constitution to conduct a count of the population every ten years, and whereas a complete and accurate count of Ohio's population is essential to the state, as the state receives federal funding that is based in part on census data, and whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and is also used to distribute billions of dollars in federal funds to state and local governments, and whereas the information collected by the census is confidential, and it is protected by law, and whereas the City of Beaver Creek is dedicated and committed to ensure that every residence is counted for inaccurate jobs that stimulate economy and growth. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim the city's support in the 2020 Census Complete Count Campaign. Now, that's very important, and that is that we have a complete count of everybody that resides or is living in Beaver Creek at the time of the census, and encourage all residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise overall awareness, ensure a full and accurate census. So I'm gonna present this to the city manager then, or pass it up here. All right, now we have some very special guests with us this evening, and so I'm gonna ask the academic coach, or academic coaches, we have one right now, I think we're gonna have some more. So Julie, right name, right? See, I learned something already. All right, I'm gonna start by just asking you to tell us about the history competition. We're gonna start with that group, is that all right? All right, please.
Actually, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the team captain for both the History Bowl and the winner nationally of the History B, Hari Parameshwaran, come up and talk a little bit about the History Bowl competition.
All right.
Can you do that?
Sure.
All right. I figured he could. He'll be much better than me.
Please.
Well, just, I would describe, why don't you describe for the City Council and the people who are here, a little bit about what makes the History Bowl separate from academic team? What kinds of things do they question?
I don't know.
Well, let's start with History Bowl, because he's got his stuff.
So, hi, I am the, my name is Hari Parameshwaran, and I'm the captain of both the Beaver Creek Academic Team and our History Bowl Team. So, in essence, History Bowls, if you ever watched Jeopardy, you watched them hit the buzzers and they answer questions. So like that, it's a group of four kids, and we're on, we play on one team, and we play against other teams, so basically at the national, at the national level, there are a hundred, 150 teams that compete in what's the varsity division, so that's 11th and 12th graders and higher. But this year, we had a freshman and a sophomore compete, and a junior, and I'm a senior. So that was our team for this year. And basically, like Jeopardy, we answer questions on history, everything from American history, world history, ask about inventions, famous presidents, people, you name it, everything. And it was a very exciting History Bowl, for one, because we were projected to do well, but we were never projected to win. We were always the number three or number four favorite, but it was very exciting to be up there on the stage and finally, you know, get the trophy, because we overcame all odds, basically, to finally do it. So it was a very exciting experience, all in all.
Was there a question overall that put you over the top?
Like the winning question?
Is there one question you all answered and just said, okay, we're there now?
Well, ironically, the last question was a question on the end of history, so that was the last question that we answered to end our last game and win the championship. So, yes.
Do you remember the question?
Oh, so based, so, that's one thing I should explain. So like Jeopardy, unlike Jeopardy, the questions aren't just one sentence, they're like paragraph-long questions. So the idea is, the question starts out with a very obscure clue, and it gets easier after every sentence until the last sentence is a giveaway. So, yeah. So the questions are very long.
Somewhere along the line, then you chime in to answer the question.
Yes, you can buzz in at any time.
The sooner the better, then.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Oh, looks like we got something special coming in here right now.
Well, this is actually, this is for the next team.
Okay.
We were not able to get into the high school for the History Bowl. Literally, the bowl is the size of the Stanley Cup. It's huge for the History Bowl. And what Hari is not telling you is that in addition to having the nationally number-one team for this bowl event, which involved not only Hari, but also Will Todd, Tegan Kapadia, and Arun Sankar, in addition to that, Hari then went on to compete individually, against all of those people individually, and Hari also was number one. So this has been a banner year. This was a banner year for the History Bowl and B competition. In addition to that, Ellen Spence, who couldn't be here, she teaches French and is the History Bowl main coach, the named coach through the school, and also the academic team main coach, she won Coach of the Year. So we had the nationally number-one History Bowl, nationally number-one History B, Coach of the Year, so we did very well, obviously, at the History Bowl.
How many years have you been doing this?
This is our...
Fourth year, and actu, oh, sorry, that was a bit loud. But this is our fourth year doing it, and actually, the fourth year since the team has been in existence, so this is a very exciting moment for the team.
And Hari, again, is very humble. When they started out, my son was actually on the team as well. He graduated last year, and so that's how I got involved in this, and now my daughter is on the team backing Hari up. We kind of call ourselves the backup, Hari's backup, his groupies. And so, and so, when they started, they had no idea that they were even gonna go up into the national competition. They were just, they're having fun seeing what they could do. Ellen didn't even realize that there were national competitions, and so for this team, under Hari's leadership and under the guidance of his mom and dad, with Ellen's, you know, assistance, for them to go from nothing to number one, not only in this, but as you'll hear, also in the academic team arena, is just amazing, and it's a real testament to Hari's talent and his ability to build an amazing team.
So is he gonna go on to Jeopardy, then?
I will try my best.
So, somebody needs to ask him what his senior superlative was when he graduated.
Oh, since you mentioned it, it was most likely to win Jeopardy, so...
So Hari is, Hari is leaving us unfortunately. He's gonna be starting at Georgia Tech, following his dad's footsteps as an engineer, so he's starting at Georgia Tech, so we're gonna, we're gonna see how well his mentoring of the underclassmen is gonna go next season, but we appreciate the opportunity to come and kind of fet first the History Bowl and B accomplishments in front of you all and the mayor this evening.
So is he in the senior?
This year. Last year, we lost half the team. This year, we're losing the main part of the team. And I can say that, because my kid was one of the ones who left last year.
All right, Coach, how do you wanna go from here? You wanna do the, talk about the other team, or the rest of the teams? And then we'll, we'll hand out everything all together, that's what you make...
Why don't you have the whole team, this team, come up, so the camp, the audience can have, see who's on that team?
It may be, it may be good to, first of all, I'd like to introduce, where did your mom go? Where is she? Oh, there she is. All right, so I have to say a word. Lakshmi and I, this is Hari's mom, Lakshmi, and she and I actually were kind of shoved into the role of coaching both the history team and the academic team last year, because Ellen had her first child, and so she was on maternity leave for the bulk of the season. And so this lady did all the hard work. I got to do the fun stuff. I got to, I got to read to the kids, and, you know, but Lakshmi did all the work. And so I would be remiss not saying that this team could not, could not have continued in Hari's junior year without his mom. She was amazing, so...
Duty is denous.
Oh, no. But, Mayor, if it's okay, what we could do is we'll call up Will and Tegan and Arun, and there you will have your national champion History Bowl team.
All right. All right, now, some of you are multiple, correct? So I'm gonna give you this, I'm gonna present these. This is all for the history. So, Arun. I would like to present this to you, sir, and congratulations very much. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
It's been, it's been amazing being able to work with Hari and the rest of these guys throughout this year, and I'm really looking forward to keeping going throughout the rest of my high school, so...
What level are you in high school? A fre, oh, man, you're gonna go all the way then, again, aren't you? Several times. All right, fantastic, congratulations. Tegan?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to present you that as well, and, you know, this, this City Council, along with this entire community, could not be prouder of all of you, and we'll get into that a little more as we move on, but do you have anything you'd like to say?
Sure. As Arun said, it was really fun playing with these guys and practicing like after school and all that at Hari's house. It really, I really developed over this year, thanks to playing with the team, and it was a really fun experience.
What level are you?
I'm going to be a junior.
Junior? All right. You plan to be in it next year?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Will? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to present you this as well, a congratulatory letter. Would you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, I can only like reinforce what they said, you know, this was a really fun year, this was a really fun time, and I've, I've played with Hari since, well, I played against Hari in middle school, but I played with him for three years, and it was, it's been really fun working with him, and I'm glad to see him go on to brighter things.
Fantastic, thank you. And Hari, I mean, all the fingers point right to you. So I would like to present you your own individual congratulatory letter, and shake your hand, sir. And if I can have, do you have anything else you'd like to say, please?
If I could save it till the end of the...
Okay, you certainly can. And may we have, may we have the coach up here. I have one of these certificates that's for the team and the coaches, and we'd like to present that to you as well.
Thank you. I will be glad to hand this off to Ellen Spence. She, she will appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hari, are you gonna be the one in charge here? Are you gonna bring the next team up, or is this coach gonna do that? Here you go.
So, this is our academic team, so like the History Bowl team, it's the same format, but now instead of just history, there's questions on literature, science, fine arts, pretty much everything you can imagine, geography, current events, and we, there are two nationals we compete at. So the one, there's one in Atlanta, and that's called the NAQT High School National Championship Tournament, and in that, we placed first out of 352 teams, which is very amazing. And the second national that we go...
And the second national that we go to is in DC.
It's the PACE National Scholastic Championship, and in that, we placed seventh out of 96 teams. So if I could call up my teammates, Tegan, Kapadia, Abby Cohen, and Tiffany Jo.
And again, I'm gonna brag on Hari here. This is where, not only does he excel in the history arena, but at the National Academic Quiz Bowl Tournament, which is this gigantic trophy that, two hours before my living room was destroyed by the tornado, thankfully, Hari's dad came and picked up out of my house. So in addition to us being number one, Hari was number three out of every single player there. And while he's talking to you about the 350-plus teams who competed, you had to be one of the top teams in your state to even be one of those 350 teams. So there was a vetting process that occurred before we got to go to Atlanta, and under Hari's leadership, again, his first year, they didn't go, because they didn't know. But every other year, the team has traveled there. Last year, even though Hari and his mom and dad did most of the coaching, because Ellen was gone on maternity leave, they jumped from...
Forty-first.
Forty-first, his sophomore year, to fifth, one year to the next, and then from fifth to first the following year. And so Hari, again, was third place there. The team, I'm sure you all probably know, were the state champions in the Ohio Academic Competition, and each of these is a different format. So the kids have the same types of topics, but the sentences are presented in a different way, and the way that you buzz in, and the way that you can collaborate with your teammates differs each type of format. So they were state champs three years in a row under that type of competition. Hari has been selected individually to compete in the National All-Star Academic Team for the State of Ohio for three of his four years, three of his four years, and this is one where you have to not only be one of the top teams, but you have to be one of the top individual players on those teams. And so yesterday, the NASAT competition, Ohio came second place in the nation, under Hari's captaincy. And Hari individually was third place against those elite team members, so he was third place individually. And in the PACE, he says that's only 96, that is college-level questions. So for them to be asked to compete there, and again, jump to seventh place is quite an amazing accomplishment, and again, a testament to his ability to get this team motivated. And his own, he's really, really good. He's really, really good. Thank you.
All right. Well, I would like, Tiffany, congratulations, and I would like to present you with this congratulatory letter. And do you have anything you'd like to say?
I would. I guess I'm kind of just reiterating what everyone else has already said, but this year was absolutely phenomenal, and one of, I had some of the best times of my life, and I am so incredibly proud of us, and especially proud of our team captain, Hari Parameshwaran. You are going to go on to do such amazing things, and I cannot wait to witness them.
What level are you?
I am a rising junior.
Rising junior. Thank you. All right, Abby, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And here, I'd like to say congratulations to you with that. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just wanna say what an honor it is to be able to compete alongside three of my best friends in the entire world. I've had two years with Hari, and he has taught me so much. He's taught me how to be a better player, he's taught me how to be a better person. It's just, I am so incredibly lucky to have had these past two years with him, and I can't wait to have these next two years with Tiffany and Tegan.
And what level are you?
We're all three rising juniors.
All right, and all three rising juniors. All right. Well, I'm gonna shake your hand again. You already have your certificate, though, because, and Hari, I'm gonna shake your hand again, and I would like to present one more team congratulatory letter for the...
Lakshmi. I'm gonna drag her up here, too, because this is the one that she, she ran.
All right, very good. Please come on, come on up here just for a second. First, thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to come.
And I'd like to present that congratulatory letter for the, on behalf of the team, for the whole team, so, thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to say? I know you've been shying away from the mic, but that's, that's all right, you're welcome to have it.
I had a great time hosting, you know, practices at home and having fun with all the moms, dads, and the kids.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure they couldn't get to where they wanted to go without your help, and everybody's, all the coaches' help, okay? Thank you. Council, anything you'd like to say?
Congrats.
Congratulations.
All right, if, everybody from both teams, if you can come up here, I'm sure some people want some pictures. Please come on up here.
We may say a few words, but Julie?
Okay, sure.
So, I'm Hari's dad, I'm Rajesh, and this is my wife Lakshmi. We are really proud of this team and what they've achieved, and I'd like to say, when Hari started, he was in middle school, and if it weren't for Beaver Creek, we wouldn't have this opportunity. When he was in middle school, he was kind of focused on geography as an area that he wanted to, we were focused on geography, let me put it that way, and he tried out to do history on a whim, and he won, and that was primarily because the school afforded the opportunity. We had no way of finding any of these things out on our own, but the school had a history competition, and they invited the kids to compete, and they did well, and then he went on to the state level and did much better, and managed to go to the national and international level. He's also competed at the international level in history. And all of that was thanks to, thanks to the school system that we were able to do that, so we were very grateful to the school for having supported all of this. And when he came to high school, he wanted to have, so when he was in middle school, he had a team of one. It was just Hari competing on his own at the national level, and he was, he was very uncomfortable doing that, he had no support, and we kind of pushed him there, and he just flat-out said, no, I don't want to compete, I don't have a team. He still tried out, when he came, he did well on his own as an individual, but when he came to high school, he decided that he would try to get a team going in the school, and it was kind of hard, because the teachers are all pulled in different directions, they're all coaching multiple things, so until Ellen showed up, and we were really fortunate that we had Ellen Spence, their teacher, their French teacher, she took charge of this team, and she afforded the team an opportunity to do well, because were it not for her, there would be none of this stuff. You know, the, the kids are there, they're excellent, but without that platform, and the backing of the school, and a teacher as a coach, it's hard to go any further. There are lots of teams nationally that are just parents pushing their kids forward. They don't have the backing of the school, so...
The first national championship that they went to is the National History Bowl, that I had to ask Julie, okay, can you send David with Hari? And like, they were all...
They didn't have a team.
Yeah, so...
We're really thankful to have Julie in our midst, because she has been kind of the driving force, along with Ellen, you know, pushing the team forward, organizing things, just being there. Out of her busy schedule, she used to be, she's there every Monday for practice, she comes in at 3:30, sits with the team, reads questions, helps Ellen, so it is, she, she is, like I said, the driving force behind the team, along with Ellen, so we have to really, really thank her for all of this. She is also a very humble person, she doesn't say that she's done a lot, but we, the team's abilities and achievements are a testament to her effort. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And you brought up a very important part, and that is our school system, and, you know, Beaver Creek is blessed to have such a fantastic school system, and, you know, it's such an important part of the entire region, so we also thank our Beaver Creek schools. So anybody wanna come up here with a picture? Hari? Yes, you may. They said you were shy.
Little bit. I wrote something kind of long. What? That's okay. It doesn't, it...
Why don't you guys come up here and let him stand in front of you? You guys come up here, and Hari, you stand out in front if you want to read it. That way, we can get you all on camera back there.
All right. Thank you, esteemed members of the City Council, for taking the time to honor the achievements of the Beaver Creek Academic Team here this evening. It's truly a testament to just how far the team has developed since its inception only four years ago. When we began our freshman year, we could only think of working towards a regional or even a state championship. Since then, the team has grown so much in scope and skill, that now we can focus our eyes on a second, maybe even third, national title in Quiz Bowl. I hope that, as I leave for college, my legacy continues to inspire future members to strive for greatness, but more importantly, I feel that academic team has left a much bigger impression on me. During my four years captaining the team, I've gained passionate interests in history and art, two subjects I would have never come into contact with had I never joined the team in the first place. In addition to the knowledge I have gained, the bonds I have grown with my team throughout each victory, loss, and fun moment have been truly meaningful to me, and these bonds have developed not only with my team, but in also getting to know other teams. We have established friendships that will last us throughout our lives. However, none of these great experiences would have been possible if it were not for the various people and organizations that helped the team succeed. The team has received generous support from our local businesses, such as Walmart, Day Air Credit Union, and Fresh Time, and I could spend hours thanking Madame Spence and the parents of the academic team's kids for all they have done, helping the team improve, organizing practices, tournaments, national trips, and so on and so forth. But I would like to take this opportunity to thank my mom and dad, who have been instrumental in my personal success and the personal successes of the team. Without all of the late-night quizzing, long drives, and support you have given me, I would be, I would not be standing here today, and thank you so much for all you have done for me. I hope that by honoring the team, the Beaver Creek community, and the City Council will continue to support the team in all its endeavors, thereby allowing it to continue to succeed. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you all so much. I mean, it's, it's just fantastic. Everybody get the pictures they would like. Coaches, wanna get up there?
Stand next to this dumb kid right here.
There you go.
He's the only one that would block the trophy.
Now, I've got a question for you. No, I don't really, I mean, it's... I was gonna see how sharp you were. Since you seem to be heading this competition, would you make sure everybody, including the coaches, gets one of these lapel pins from us, city?
Oh, sure.
We'd appreciate that very much. So thank you all so much for being here and letting us just see how intelligent... So, thank you all so much for being here and letting us just see how intelligent and, you know, how well you did in listening to your stories. So, thank you so much. Thanks for representing Beaver Creek. All right. That is just, that'll work just fine, thank you. I don't know about anybody else, but I felt just a little bit insecure with all that brilliance, brilliance in the building, yes, I'll tell you. Isn't it though, or makes, makes you feel good about the future, doesn't it? It sure does. Okay. Moving on, call to order, we will, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Upton for the pledge, please.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. If you would please join me in the pledge and prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May it remain standing. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
We have an agenda before us and, uh, we've been asked to amend that agenda. So, we... Right, and I need a motion to amend. This is to add decision item after ordinances and... Two pre-scheduled speakers. And the motion to appoint. All right. And that's all within the one that we have in front of us. All right, so do I have a... Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda. That's gonna be a pre-scheduled. Along with the, along with Congressman Turner's rep.
All right. I would move for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion to, and a second to approve the agenda as amended, as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, approval of the minutes, May 20th, 2019, work session. Any changes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pre-scheduled presenters, tonight we have with us Marty Heidi from Congressman Turner's office. Good evening.
Good evening. I was real close to leaving because this was so impressive.
It was, wasn't it?
I was thinking, oh, I've got a, a big shoes to fill, yeah, 27 minutes.
I wish I could be as shy as Hari, you know?
Um, I'm Marty Heidi, and I'm Green County Outreach for Congressman Mike Turner. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm wearing two hats tonight. One is the State of Ohio and the other is the Federal Department of Homeland Security and Transportation Security Administration. Um, I want to talk to you about the new driver's licenses that are becoming effective. The law was passed in 2018, and as of 2020, all people will need to get the new driver's license. There are two kinds, and the first one is the compliant, and the second one is the standard. The compliant driver's license will enable you to walk into an airport, board a plane, travel domestically. Uh, of course, you need a passport to go internationally, but if you want to fly to Florida, you will need the, the driver's license with the little star on the upper right-hand corner, and that is the compliant one. If you get the standard driver's license, you can still board a plane, but you have to carry with you proof of citizenship in the form of a passport or a birth certificate. So, it's just easier and, and highly recommended to get the compliant one. Um, I will tell you, the price for both is the same, there's no difference. So, the only stipulation is to get the compliant, you need to walk into the BMV with a birth certificate or passport, proof of citizenship, social security card, and proof of residency, like you're billing any kind of invoice, something that shows that you live at that address. Social security cards, uh, I will tell you that the State of Ohio does not allow people to go online and apply for a social security card yet. Those discussions are happening, but right now you can apply for a new social security card if you don't have one, uh, through the social security office in Xenia. Um, the other thing is that if you're married and you have a name at birth, which wouldn't be your married name unless you plan very well, um, you can bring your marriage license to show your new name that, that would carry that forward. You just need to create a paper trail. So, that's the compliant and also the standard. Anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, sorry, the two proofs of Ohio residency, I know you said you could use a bill with your name and address.
Yes.
Could I bring in two separate bills, or would my current driver's license act as proof of residency?
No, you need to bring proof, yeah, an invoice or something that was mailed to you that shows your address, yeah.
And then as far, as, yeah, as far as renewal goes, uh, if I bring my marriage license in one time to show name change, will I need to bring all of these items, including my marriage license, every time?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, just once you get the compliant, no, you won't have to do it every time. Just, just this initial time to get, this is a new format.
No, I understand, I just was confused when the one notice said additional documents needed at first issuance and at the time of renewal, so I wasn't sure if that meant when I renew compliant from here on out, or just the initial...
No, that's just for people who are 18 getting a new license and then renewals without getting the compliant.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the explanation.
And then, just one more quick thing, the Social Security Administration Office of Inspector General has issued a warning about a scam. And there is a number that you can call to report the scam, but I will just tell you, the message that we're sending is IRS and social security will never call you at home. They will never call you by phone, everything that's communicated to you is by mail. So, um, if someone calls you and says they're IRS or they're social security, it's not correct. I mean, this is just not done, unless you have a case with social security, but otherwise they won't. We had a gentleman that was 92 years old that called our office and said that, that somebody had called him, and the only reason he didn't give them his social security number was because he couldn't remember it. So, just be very, very careful, uh, don't give your social security number to anyone. So, that's the message for the community. Anybody have any questions?
I got that call.
Oh, yes.
It just said your social security number is in jeopardy, prosecutor's gonna call you, call us. It was really a crazy call.
Yes, convincing. And they prey on elderly people and people that aren't, they're kind of caught off guard, so, you know, just don't do it. I'm not gonna ask for that to be repeated. I heard it, but... So, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here as usual. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heidi. All right. And we have two more, we have another pre-scheduled presentation, and that's for FEMA and SBA, and Pete, I think you wanted to, uh...
Yes, if I may, Mayor...
Get into this first.
Yes, so we had, uh, Fay Cooley is gonna come up, she's with FEMA. FEMA, as you well know, is here for the individuals, for the homeowners and property owners and the renters of residence that were impacted by tornado. And as you, uh, if you don't know, uh, they will be opening at Shaw Elementary at 7:00 AM on Wednesday, the 26th. Uh, but we had a meeting on Saturday, and I actually wasn't quite sure what the meeting was about, Fay, to start with, uh, the township administrator and myself. And, uh, come find out, Fay was like, "Well, we're here too," and, and she is with the, what I call Disaster Survivor Assistance Team. And they're the ones, we posted this on Facebook Saturday afternoon, they are actually doing the door-to-door and canvassing. Uh, they'll have a different range of, what, five to seven people, but they will be like, she's dressed with FEMA gear on and, most importantly, ID, uh, so if, you know, you can ask. And that's one thing she's stressed, 'cause with everything going on with IRS and social security, it's the same thing in person, people walk up and impersonate people. So, I've asked, uh, her to come and just, uh, give a brief of what they're here, what they're looking for, what they're gonna be doing, uh, to spread the word. So, take it away, Fay.
Okay. Thank you so much, Pete, for inviting me and, uh, for you all allowing me to come. Um, I've tried to get Mickey to do this, my partner back there, and, uh, she's too short, she couldn't see over the podium, so you're stuck with me. Uh, actually, Mickey, if you'll stand up and show them your vest, um, some people don't have the shirts, um, you know, they came in, and so they'll have a FEMA vest on as their logo material. Yeah, come up here for the, for the camera. Um, and while she's doing that, I'll just reiterate, uh, we are the Disaster Survivor Assistance Team. Um, we are going door-to-door. Our main, you are. And our main focus is to get people registered. Thank you, Mickey. Um, and get them in the system, get them started in the recovery process. We encourage everyone to register, homeowner, renter, um, if you have insurance, if you don't have insurance, you know, if you lost a little, if you lost a lot, uh, we can guarantee one thing, if you don't register, you won't get any help. So, we encourage everybody to do that. I also would like to say that, um, when you do register and you get your correspondence, whether it's email or in the, in the mail, read the whole letter. It'll tell you if you were denied, if you have insurance, you're gonna be denied initially because FEMA looks to insurance, you've paid for that service and for those people to, or the company to replace your belongings and help you rebuild. So, we're gonna look to them for that first, but you can submit your settlement, you can submit a contractor's estimate, or a denial letter if they deny you. And then that puts you in play within the system of FEMA. Um, you can call the 1-800 number, thanks Pete for having that up there, or they can go on disasterassistance.gov. When we go to a house and nobody's there, we leave one of these flyers. Um, we carry iPad with us, we can register people at their door, we can look up their case and do updates and inquiries, tell them where they're at in the process and what to look forward to, uh, in the coming days. We had a gentleman yesterday who, uh, was a little frustrated, and we looked at his file and found that he's in queue for a inspector to call him, and, you know, that made him feel better. And, you know, explain the process, and so we can do that, um, with the iPad. Um, he mentioned the DRC opening, it is, it will be open seven to seven, seven days a week, um, at this point in time. I encourage people to go there, as long as there's good foot traffic and the numbers are up and there's a need, it'll stay open. When they start getting just a few people coming in, it begins to look like we're not needed anymore, so they leave, uh, or they close it down. Um, I guess if there's one thing I could really express, it's that usually when FEMA says no, or they're, you're denied, or you are ineligible, any of those words, that usually means we need more information, which again is if you read the letter, then it tells you what we need. Um, other than that, I don't have anything else to relay to you. Um, well, I will add, we have, have a lot of folks who are displaced, and we're having trouble finding those folks. So, um, we're trying to take some measures to reach out with a message to say if you're displaced, because they could possibly get rental assistance, even if they have insurance, if they're a renter, you know, the rental assistance could be a possibility for all those people who are displaced and don't have a place to live right now. And with that, I will take, any questions?
Questions?
I must have done good.
So, has a certain amount been allocated to be used in Green County?
There is no allocation set, the, the pockets are deep, if you're eligible, you get the money.
Um, how about demolition? It's on. It's on. Um, how about, um, demolition of, of buildings?
Okay, that is a local issue. Um, FEMA looks at helping you to make repairs, replacement, or whatever of your home if you're eligible for that, but nothing to do with demolition cleanup or anything. And they don't, and the monies does not include labor, it's for materials only.
So, what happens if the house is there and it's gonna cost $20,000 to demolish it before you can build a new one, but your insurance is only paying for the new construction? Who, a typical person wouldn't have an extra $20,000 to pay for that demolition of that house?
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, as I said, FEMA works to help repair or replace the home, and it doesn't include anything with regard to demolition cleanup or, you know, any of that kind of stuff, so...
Julie, we may get some answers from our next guest in the SBA.
And then, um, I lost my train of thought.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I'll think of it in a minute.
If you do, I'll be in the back of the room for a few minutes, I'm gonna listen to Julie.
Oh, the, the stormwater, um, there has been so much destruction there. Uh, when a, when a plat, a subdivision is developed, uh, the developer plans the stormwater so that it works. And, and the people who buy the individual lots maintain it, and it still works to a certain degree. Now, it's been destroyed. The city typically doesn't go in and do stormwater on private property, but there's been a lot of disaster there. Is that something that FEMA does?
That's definitely out of my lane. If it is, it's not anything that I know about, but I'm not gonna say, give you a definite, because that's, I've never had anybody ask me that before, so...
Yeah, there's, there's houses over there that are, are, because we're having so much rain right now, and other, their neighbors' stormwater is messed up, now their whole yards are, are flooding. And so, there's some critical stormwater issues out there that somebody's gonna have to help with, and it's not in our budget, so I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna figure it out.
I wish I had an answer, but honestly, if I told you something, I'd be telling you fib because I don't know.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? In some cases, in a lot of cases, folks are referred to the Small Business Administration for different reasons, uh, and Ms. Julie's gonna come up at your introduction and talk about that, so I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Yep, Julie Garrett is, uh, the Small Business Administration, so I've asked her to come along. She, they are stationed, uh, going to be at the same place, uh, at Shaw Elementary starting on Wednesday as well, but are currently and will remain at Chamber of Com, Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce, right? That's where you set up shop last week.
Yes, that's correct.
So, actually, they were first on scene as far as being open and assisting, uh, people, so, go ahead, Julie.
Yeah. So, hi, everybody, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. Can you hear me? I'm so soft-spoken.
No, you're good.
Okay. So, my name's Julie Garrett, I'm a public affairs specialist for the SBA, and I know a lot of people are thinking, "What are you doing here? You're from the Small Business Administration," but I'm from the Office of Disaster Assistance. And when there's a disaster like this and it's declared by your governor, we come in and we help renters, homeowners, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, and businesses of all sizes, not just small businesses. And I have given you our paperwork, so I know you have that to look at, so I'll keep it brief. Um, we, uh, have programs that help renters with forty, up to $40,000 to repair or replace their personal items, including their cars. A lot of people don't know they should have renters' insurance, they don't really understand that, and so that's real important once they lose their possessions in a disaster. And the interest rates are really low on these loans, they're as low as 1.938% for homeowners and renters. Homeowners can borrow up to $200,000 for their uninsured and underinsured losses. So, a lot of people here have insurance, but when they get their settlement, it might not be enough to do the work that needs to be done. You were talking about demolition earlier, I'm not sure if we covered demolition, but I believe I've heard in the past that that is in a lot of contractors' estimates, so perhaps... perhaps I can find that out for you and let you know, I'll email you on that. And then businesses and nonprofits can, and churches can borrow up to $2 million, and that is for a combination of working capital needs, like businesses that had to shut down because they didn't have electricity or gas for a while, or just too much chaos and they had to close. They can get funds to just keep the lights on and keep open, and also to help with their uninsured losses, especially if they didn't have business interruption insurance. So that's the program. In a nutshell, a lot of people who are getting registered with FEMA will be told to apply to SBA, and they're going to be mad about that because they're going to prefer to get a grant, and we understand that. What happens is they get sent over to us, we see if they're eligible to apply for a loan, if they can meet the credit and income guidelines, which are lower than a commercial bank. But let's say they aren't approved, or they can't do that, then we refer them back to FEMA for a program called Other Needs Assistance, O-N-A, and then they're up again for additional grant consideration. So it's a process that they go through, and that's a big message that we want to tell people, just go through the process. If they're approved for a loan, they don't have to take it, they have 60 days to decide to take it. If they turn it down, they have six months to turn their loan back on. So like, later if they get that insurance settlement, it's not quite enough, and four months from now they wish they had $10,000, they can turn their loan back on and get that additional funding. Oh, another thing here for this area is people who apply for loans can get an additional 20% for mitigation, that's to make their homes safer. They could put in a safe room or a storm shelter if that's, if that would help. And it's real easy to apply, it only takes about 20 minutes. They can apply in person over at the Chamber of Commerce, they can apply eight to five, Monday through Friday, or they can apply at the Disaster Recovery Center that's opening at Shaw Elementary. That's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week to start. Or online at sba.gov, or you can call 800-659-2955, and we will send you a paper application through the mail. So I encourage people to go and do it online because, I mean, in person, because we have somebody there who can answer your questions and just help you get the loan in, the application in, and you won't have to worry about it after that, so.
What is the maximum household income for a family of two?
We don't have a maximum income.
So yours is based on poverty plus?
It's nothing like that with us. If you look at this fact sheet right here, the white paper, if you look down at the bottom where it says home loans and the percentage rate, you'll see where it says no credit available elsewhere, 1.938%, and then credit available elsewhere, 3.875%. So, we do things differently than a commercial bank, we flip it. Like a commercial bank, the higher your credit, the more money you have, the lower interest rate you get, but we flip that. So, let's say you have great credit, but you don't have a lot of assets, you would probably be more likely to qualify for that lower interest rate with us. Let's say you had tons of money in the bank, really high income, perhaps, and a really good credit rating, perhaps you would be offered that higher interest rate, so that's how it works.
Okay. And for the camera, repeat those two interest rates again.
Okay, so, home loans, the interest rate is as low as 1.938%, and that's for homeowners and renters. Business loans, as low as 4%, and for working capital loans, it's 4%. And for nonprofit organizations, the interest rate is 2.75%. So, all of this information is online, and you can call our 800 number, we've got lots of people there who can answer your questions.
Five months.
And I guess that's enough, I should stop.
Five months on the first payment?
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. I thought you were saying, sit down. Like your five minutes are up, so. I misunderstood you. Okay, so, a really great thing about our loans is there is a deferment on the payments. You don't pay the first payment until four months plus 30 days from when you sign the closing documents. So in effect, you have about a five-month window before you have to start making the payments, and the term is up to 30 years, so they're very reasonable payments. And if you've had substantial damage and you still have a mortgage, there's a chance of getting your whole mortgage and loan at that lower interest rate, getting it refinanced. Yeah, I've heard people say-
That is terrific, that's terrific.
Yeah, I've heard people say they come out better once they go through this process in terms of their monthly payment, so.
That's an excellent benefit, thank you.
Yeah. This is a really good loan, it's no cost to apply, no points, no fees, it doesn't do a ding on your credit, like, it's as good a loan as you can get, in my opinion, from watching this over the years, so.
I'm glad you're in Beaver Creek. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you.
I know, I sat in your office last week, and we talked, and it was, it was quite revealing. I mean, I had no idea about what was going on, but I get the bottom-line impression I got was, anybody affected from the tornado should apply both places.
Yeah.
Don't think about it, don't say, I don't deserve it. Apply at FEMA, apply at SBA.
Exactly.
You don't have to do anything with either one, you just need to get, in essence, get on file.
Yeah, I heard, I heard somebody say, I make too much money to apply for FEMA, like, no, just apply.
Just do it.
They'll tell you if you do.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt anything, it doesn't take a lot of time.
Yeah. This is kind of a Plan B, it's a little money in the back of your pocket in case you might need it as you're recovering, and there's no collateral if you borrow $25,000 or less. So, it's a great loan, and we really want to help you, so we want to get you recovered as fast as possible. Oh yeah, you can also apply for a loan while you're waiting for your insurance settlement, then you assign over your insurance monies to pay down your loan. So, we can process the loan, it takes about two weeks.
Oh, that makes it go faster.
It helps it go faster, because sometimes that can really get bogged down with the insurance company, so.
It made a big difference for me sitting in the office, so any one of you might want to spend a half hour or 15 minutes sitting and talking to the staff over there, just to get that clarity in your mind. It's, I'm still not 100% clear, but a lot clearer than I was when I walked in.
Yeah. Just think of us as FEMA and SBA working together, they do grants for short-term, we do low-interest loans to get you back to where you were before the disaster, where to help you fully recover.
And if you don't qualify for SBA, you can go back to FEMA-
Yes, and try to get more grant money.
-and possibly qualify for something else. So it's a two-way, it's a three-way street, really, but it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we have this on our website?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say, I really admire your community, you guys are working beautifully together, and everybody's been incredibly helpful and professional, and just great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. So we will move on to ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 19-08.
This is a third reading of an ordinance providing for the submission to the electric amendments of the Charter of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and to place the same on the ballot at the general election, November 5th, 2019.
Any discussion? Councilmember Littrell, this was you-sponsored disordnance?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-08. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. Next, ordinance 19-09.
This is a third reading of an ordinance repealing current Section 31.01 reimbursement of council members for expenses of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adapting new Section 31.01 reimbursement of council members of expenses, and repealing Section 31.17 expenses of council of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances.
Any discussion? Councilmember Upton?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further comments on this one, I move for approval of ordinance 19-09.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-09. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 19-10, please.
This is a third reading of an ordinance repealing current Sections 35.17 and 35.18 of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances and adopting new Sections 35.17 and 35.18 of the City of Beaver Creek Code of Ordinances in order to revise competitive bidding requirements.
Thank you. Any discussion? Move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 19-11.
This is a second reading of an ordinance amending the current Thoroughfare Plan as approved by Resolution 82-3 and amended by ordinances 89-19, 93-61, 94-55, and 12-22, and the approved bikeway plan as approved by Resolution 99-12 and amended by ordinance 12-22 be replaced with the Thoroughfare Plan 2019 update as described in Exhibit A dated June 4th, 2019.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 19-11, so it's a public hearing. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, this will naturally move on to the third reading at the next regular scheduled meeting, third reading. Next, ordinance 19-12.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, and to amend ordinances 18-28 and 19-03.
Sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Diane, that was perfect. Any questions? Actually, we discussed this thoroughly in the June 17th work session, the city has to appropriate some funds to cover the expenditures associated with the tornado event on May 27th. The expenditures include overtime for our employees to provide safety and security to the residents, and a larger portion is to pay for the emergency contract the city had under contract to clear the streets and the removal of the vegetation, and also the costs associated with other ancillary things that you associate with these type of disasters, signal repair, fuel, other commodities that we've had to purchase thus far. As I said, in the work session, the city was fortunate to have a contractor already on, under contract to immediately mobilize them, and they've done an excellent job getting in here and clearing out as much of the vegetation as they possibly can. Again, the costs associated with all this, the emergency, have been submitted to the EMA, and as a matter of fact, tomorrow, we have a meeting with FEMA to go over the public assistance program. Obviously, there's two different tracks, there's the residents, and now we're talking about the public assistance, which would be the City of Beaver Creek in this case. So, in order to pay for the past, current, and future costs, the city has to appropriate some funds to pay some of those invoices that'll be trickling in here. In order to do that, as we discussed at the work session, the first thing we wanted to do was to reduce the fund balance requirement from the 20 to the 10. Again, let me back up for just a minute. Again, people think that we have a lot of money out there available for this with fund accounting and government. The funds that we can only use for this is the street funds and the general fund. So again, police funds and other designated funds can't be used as a pool to assist in these expenditures, so they have to come out of the street fund. That being said, we discussed reducing that fund balance from the 20% down to the 10%. That will give us some additional funds available to pay these invoices, and again, that's a recommendation by the council to allow that to happen. Again, basically, what's happening is the city is using the emergency funds for the emergency, so that's why we always have those fund balances, and this is a perfect example of when we'd want to utilize that. The other thing that we talked about was reducing some capital projects that we had in the pipeline. The city had budgeted for the $2 million street program, the base bid, it's actually 2.3 with curbs, and we went out to bid this time alone, by ourselves, and got very good prices, so what we ended up doing was, we were going to add streets to that existing base program to do additional streets for the fiscal year, but what we decided to do was delay that, so again, we would have the cash to float the additional expenditures related to this emergency. The other thing is, is what you'll see in this legislation is we're certifying the revenue, some of the revenues from the previous year's fund balance, again, we had a little bit more revenue than we had anticipated, and we saved some money along the way in the expenditure, so we're going to actually use that, that carryover, to actually fund some of these expenditures also. So we think with all of that together, that we can appropriate enough funds initially for the first round of the emergency expenditures that we've experienced. So, what you have before you is the legislation to take a million dollars, I know we talked about $1.2 million at the work session, some of that can actually be done as a internal transfer by the city manager within that fund, so that's why you're seeing the million dollars to be appropriated initially. Again, once we get past that initial phase, if there are additional expenditures, we may be looking at a little bit more out of the street, and perhaps actually digging into the general fund for those expenditures also. So again, we have a meeting with FEMA tomorrow to go over whether or not the city and the county would be eligible for FEMA funds. We're hoping that they will be, the percentage is yet to be determined, but again, the lag between us paying these invoices and possibly getting that reimbursement at a percentage, there's quite a difference in the timing on that. So, again, that's why you have the additional appropriations before you. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, Mr. Cesar, can you just, for the public, give an approximate dollar amount that we're committed to right now, I mean, if expenditures-
Well, I think that, just for our contractor alone, and our own overtime without a lot of ancillary, we're probably looking at $800,000 that we spent already. So we, again, we'll get there pretty quickly to that million, million point two, to cover these expenditures. Again, the contractor was under contract for an hourly rate, overtime rate, and again, we had a lot of money spent with our contractor, getting the signals back up, getting power lines, our dark fiber cable got cut during the event, so again, all of those things are accumulating pretty quickly.
All right, thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to just make one quick comment, really just a thanks and attaboy to Bill and Pete and the entire staff. When I first got on council, and Melissa can attest to it, there was, there was a push at the time to move our fund balance down to 12%. You know, that was what we were going to keep as a reserve for a rainy day and emergency funds, and, you know, obviously, the push didn't go very far. You know, I think that year we held at 15, and we've slowly have worked towards 20 over time, and this is a perfect example of why those are needed, you know? So here we are today, making a decision to move to 10, because we've been smart over the years to hold on to what we've needed. I can't imagine, had we, you know, eight years ago decided to go to 12, what position we'd be in today on an emergency like this. So, Bill, I know you were there at those times, and we had those conversations, and not to slight any of the past council members or councils, that was just a product of the times, right? We were, our budgets were tight, our funds were low, and we had to make decisions like that, but I'm glad we held on that when we did, and that's allowed us today to be smart and do these types of things, so appreciate that, and appreciate all the work you and Teresa have done with it.
And that's a good point, too. Again, the general practice is to have three months of operating. You can see how quickly one disaster will eat through that three months of operating reserve that you have out there, so, but, good point.
As tight and lean as our budget is, and I'm not sure if the residents really always realize how tight it is, I am very thankful that you've been able to scrape up enough to pay, the citizens in the disaster area are so appreciative of having those trucks and having our staff work overtime. I am so thankful that you've been able to figure out how to defer projects and postpone implementation and scrape up enough so that we can provide the services needed, and I value that, thank you very much.
And again, that's a good point, and the other thing is, is that the key to this whole thing is, we're hoping that this is just a delay of those capital projects and things.
Well, that's why I use that word.
So again, when we get reimbursed, hopefully we can get that money generated back into the fund balance and then reactivate those streets that we've left out in this first go-round.
I hope FEMA will come through, but we'll just have to wait- I hope, you know, will come through, but we'll just have to wait for that day and hope it happens.
We'll make a good pitch tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
A second.
Now I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance nineteen dash twelve. This requires a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinance nineteen dash fourteen.
This is an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Beaver Creek and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And we'd like to turn this one over to Mr. Steve, please.
Oh. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Looking at this particular ordinance, I was just realized in looking at the section three of it, it is the emergency provision. We need to expand it slightly, so what I would ask that council would do is amend this section three to effectively state where it says, after general welfare of the people of this municipality, at comma, "and" to allow the speedy implementation of changes to, required by the Ohio Revised Code, and then, comma, "and" shall take effect. One of the requirements in our charter is we need to have a little bit of a reason why, and health, safety, and welfare is the general provision, but our charter requires a little bit more, so that's why I want to make sure we just beep that up a little bit, so.
Are you clear with that? Do you have that? Do you need that?
I'm, I've got it.
You've got it?
I would move for amending the ordinance as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend ordinance nineteen dash fourteen as explained by our legal counsel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now we have to approve the ordinance.
Now the ordinance nineteen dash fourteen. Any discussion on it in general?
But, but we approved amending it, but we have to approve the ordinance as well.
Correct, and it has to be a motion approved as an emergency.
As amended as an emergency.
Thank you.
Second.
But we haven't asked for discussion on this. Did anybody have any discussion on this ordinance? No? Okay. Now, who wants to make the motion? Please. I've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance nineteen dash fourteen as amended.
I'm sorry, who seconded it this second time?
And as an emergency.
Okay. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. All right. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-four.
This is a resolution by the Beaver Creek City Council extending the appointment of Dwight Pete E. Landrum as city manager and approving a five-year employment agreement.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Vice Mayor, you were, worked on this?
I would just say, I know we discussed this at length, so just so that the public knows, this was something that council discussed and reviewed intently. This is something that was looked at by our city attorney as well, so everything has been gone through repeatedly, and everything has checked out, and now it's just the matter of presenting it at council and having any final discussion if there's anything left before voting to approve.
Thank you.
So his original contract was for how long, and how long will this one be?
I believe the original contract was three years, and then it was extended to a five-year contract at this point.
I was just trying to tell the public that because I thought it was a nice, a nice thing to share.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next, resolution nineteen dash thirty-six.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager and the chief of police to enter into an interaction and cooperative agreement with the Kettering Health Network Police Division for police services at the Soyn Medical Center.
Thank you. Chief.
Evening, Mayor, Council. The Kettering Health Network Police Division, formerly known as Grandview Police, has provided onsite security for the Soyn Medical Center since it opened in two thousand and eleven. Kettering Health Network Division Police employ personnel that have obtained police officer certifications from the state of Ohio, and this agreement would continue to give them, the Kettering Health Network Police Division, authority to provide police services to the hospital facility in cooperation with Beaver Creek Police. This is an updated agreement. We've had an agreement with them since two thousand and eleven when they opened. Mr. McHugh has reviewed the updated agreement. A lot of it was name changes, updating signatories, and some of the language, and staff is recommending that council approve this resolution.
Thanks, Chief. Any discussion? No one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nineteen dash thirty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Moving on. Decision items. And it looks like, looks like the Vice Mayor and myself are going to be out of town here real soon. I'm going to be up on Kelly's Island on June twenty-ninth, and so we've, the discussion or the discussion right now is to appoint Councilmember Upton as the acting mayor for June twenty-ninth. Any discussion?
Let's move to the first step.
There is a motion.
There's a motion in the agenda, actually prepared, which just needs to be read.
Should, well, before you do that, should acting go in front of mayor or not? I mean, it just says appoint mayor on June twenty-ninth.
It's act, correct. It is acting mayor, yes.
Because it doesn't have an end date.
Yeah. True. Correct. Oh, you got it.
I think you specified only June twenty-ninth, though.
That's true.
Yeah, let's limit this, please.
It says appointed on June twenty-ninth. That doesn't mean it ends.
Change it to four, June twenty-ninth.
Four? Okay, now, somebody want to read a motion?
I would be delighted. So, I would like to move to appoint Councilmember Upton as mayor, acting, as acting mayor on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, since both the mayor and vice mayor will be unavailable on this date.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second to do just that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstention. Just, I don't want to vote for myself.
Well, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Are we going to be having a special council meeting on that date?
Yeah, about two o'clock, so be ready for that.
Okay, okay, and we will be passing lots of ordinances and, okay?
Just to extend the acting mayor to further out, June twenty-ninth. (laughing).
I might get shipwrecked.
We'll come hallow you back.
All right, council time. How about we change it up just a little bit? Councilmember Van, would you like to start on council time?
Sure. We had established community development districts for our PACE program and some other things. I would urge the city to establish Urban Renewal Community Development District that is the path of the tornado across Beaver Creek. There are things, everybody, we are still in a momentum of solving all the problems, and a lot of them will be solved without city intervention, but there are things that cities can't do that the Ohio code, Ohio Revised Code allows us to do if we designate that as a special district, and maybe we would get some housing and community development block grant funds, maybe we would get some other funds, and we may need this for some future improvements that are yet to be defined, and it doesn't hurt anything to have that district defined, but it will give us the key to solving problems that are going to be there, whether they're the stormwater, whether they're the demolition problem I talked about, whether, whatever, whatever look, maybe it's planting trees, I don't know what it's going to be, but we will have permission to work with the property owner, to work on private property, to do those things if we have this legislation that complies with the Ohio code. So I would urge staff to move forward and explore that and probably get it back to us within the next month or so, so that in six months or a year, when we're trying to figure out how we're going to finish up some stuff, we are ready and in play to do that. And the other, other thing, I did walk part of the neighborhood and talk to some neighborhood residents, and the removal of construction debris is totally a challenge. Evidently, they were told initially that the city would be picking that up, and then we've kind of changed our tone on that, and now we're not picking it up. I understand that. I get that because, I get it, but I think that we need to, maybe, it's one of those extraordinary things that we may want to do, and maybe at a future time, we need to talk about that construction debris. Not that we have extra money, but we need to, we need to help this neighborhood recover because it's horrible what they're having to go through. They, in the first two weeks, they took time off work, and they just worked their butts off, and all the churches came in, and everybody was working their butts off, but now, they've gone back to work, and so they only can work on this on evenings and weekends, like, and so there's just so much left to be done, and some people may have been out of town, and they weren't there to accept the help of the churches when they were helping. It's just, there's just a lot to be done, so I just am very sympathetic to the residents. I don't have a specific list of things that I think we should be doing at this point, but I know it's coming just because I've worked in neighborhoods, and I know it's coming, it's just a matter of what it is, and I'd like us to be prepared.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littrell?
Well, I do. I know it's on everyone's mind, it's just ten short days until the Fourth of July, and the city appreciates UES's sponsorship again this year. Some of city staff have worked, and so, just a reminder that Fourth of July is going to be on Thursday, July fourth, and the parade is at six. If you do not want to be in that area around Dayton-Zenia, you need to make sure you follow the detour signs because traffic gets backed up around Haynes and Dayton-Zenia because at the McDonald's is where the parade route will start again, and I think this year, the floats, because that's one of my favorites, we're judging the floats on the PNC side, so if you don't have a float registered, please contact Parks and Rec because it's a great event, and the creativity that the folks do is really great. So, again, Fourth of July, UES is the sponsor, they have been wonderful in assisting and helping just make this a tremendous family event, and I hope everyone can come out and see the great fireworks show.
I agree.
And the parade. The parade's always fun, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Upton?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Just to piggyback on Councilmember Van's thoughts there, a few years ago, we did these neighborhood cleanups where we designated a certain neighborhood, and I think we contracted with one of the trash companies in the area, I don't remember if it was Rumpier Waste Management, to come in and drop off a dumpster for a weekend, and just said, hey, here's a free dumpster, bring these various items. I don't know if we can reach out to that vendor again and see if they'd be, if we still have a contract in place with them, if we can maybe negotiate to get a dumpster out to that area to help with the construction cleanup or the construction debris, but just a thought from the past to look at again, maybe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Curran?
I think at this time, your honor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. I just want to thank the Beaver Creek High School Academic and History Bowl teams for coming in again. I was outrageously impressed with every single one of them, especially their valiant captain, who is extraordinarily shy. I think he should have been a little bit more personable. He was wonderful. The whole team was amazing, and I'm feeling very inadequate about my own education at this time. Beaver Creek schools are phenomenal, and I echo their gratitude and praise that we have this opportunity here in our city, so I really hope to see them back here next year with a trophy twice as tall as me, so.
All right, I agree. All right, mayor's report, I don't have a whole lot tonight, but I mean, it's been about thirty days now since the tornado, and I don't know how many of you traveled to other neighborhoods that were hit, other communities that were hit, I should say, and, and you have to give a pat on the back to everybody in Beaver Creek that, the work at the city, the township, the county, I mean, they've, they've just pitched in, and it's run so smooth. We're, we're way ahead of, from what I can tell, of most communities, and so, there are a lot of little reasons for that, but everything came together, and it really worked well. I wish a couple dumpsters, you know, would get rid of that, that debris, but that's, it would be filled in about five minutes.
By contractors getting paid.
And there'll be something that we're, you know, we're going to have to find, most likely do something along that line, maybe, but we've got to, we've got to exercise that process of insurance and get through that process, and just for clarity, though, I don't think that there's anybody from the city that told anybody, now, there's people met or thought they were from the city, but I don't think there was anybody from the city that said, we were picking up tree debris. Where I saw the confusion, or construction debris, where I saw the confusion was, is that we said, separate it, and so just because we threw that word in there of construction debris and tree debris, people came to think that, okay, we're going to do tree debris first and then move on to construction. So I think that's where that came from. Will we end up having to probably do more work than we would like to have to do? We probably will, but let's, we have to wait for the system to work, we have to wait for FEMA to work, but I can understand the frustration. I mean, there's no two ways about it, I'd be frustrated myself. And other than that, I just want to say thanks to everybody. I mean, it's just been a tremendous show of this community as to what we're made of and what we can do when we put our minds to it, so that's all, I'm going to end with that. City manager, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you that that was probably some of the confusion in the early press releases. We said we would only be picking up tree and brush debris, and please separate it into two piles because we won't pick it up if it's mixed, and I think that's where people somehow assumed that we'd be picking up the construction, but it was, we were separating it so we could pick up the tree because if it was mixed, we wouldn't pick it up at all, so I think that's probably, but it, it's been very heartwarming, the outpouring of the community, I deeply agree, and, you know, every night, every day, you know, I think, I wanted to mention the Fourth of July, I was talking, Dayton Daily News, somebody called and wanted to know if there was any delay in the Fourth of July, and I said, no, it wasn't during, as part of the impacted area or parade route or our celebration at Rotary Park, which is great, but I said, you know, I think this year, I told the press that I think this year, it's going to be a community coming together even more, and it's going to be a time of people maybe talking during waiting on the parade to come and sharing and saying, what else can I do to help you, and that kind of activity might, might be a different type of Fourth of July celebration. I think everybody needs to celebrate the independence and take a moment to give back to yourself and honor our country, great country we have, and our great city of Beaver Creek that we have, so I hope people remember that, this Fourth of July that we celebrate, that we're celebrating Beaver Creek and our community, that we have come together as one, and it's very, very emotional for me to see that. But I just wanted to remind everybody just quickly that, again, the FEMA team, as you heard, will be going door to door, are going to door to door, ten, twelve hours a day, so you saw them, they'll be wearing their FEMA gear and FEMA badges, so don't be afraid to ask for identification because they're asking for a bank account, and they're asking for sensitive information, and the Shaw Elementary, again, we mentioned, June twenty-sixth, this Wednesday, seven. 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they'll be open seven days a week, and of course, the Small Business Administration, we already mentioned, that they're at, already at the Chamber of Commerce, and they'll also be at Shaw Elementary starting on Wednesday as well. And 4th of July, we've talked about that, again, yes, I will echo Councilmember Littrell, thank you to UES for sponsoring the fireworks and so much more, what a great, fantastic partner UES has been throughout the years, but this year, even the more, so we appreciate UES. And just want to mention, we have two captains actually just finished some really great things in their life. Graduate Captain Jeff Fioreta graduated from the FBI National Academy, and we congratulate him for his program in Virginia, and he is one of 256 law enforcement officers who graduated on June 7th, and the session consisted of men and women from 49 states, and including members of law enforcement agencies from the District of Columbia, 35 international countries, five military organizations, and seven federal civilian organizations, so congratulations to Captain. I mean, it's a, it's a wait to even get on there, you have to apply to get on the list, and then you wait, so congratulations to Jeff. Also, just with our other captain, Chad Lindsey, he graduated from Public Safety Leadership Academy, so we're proud of him as well, the Public Safety Leadership Academy, he was chosen to attend this advanced training due to his leadership qualities, as he's already demonstrated at the police department, and specialized curriculum covered other areas of leadership and ethics, public management, organizational culture, budgeting, and behavior in law enforcement, and he'll be taking over Support Services Division, which includes records and dispatch, changing a little bit of responsibilities on the captains. So congratulations to Chad as well, very proud of our fine police department, and that's all I have tonight. Oh, one, one, sorry, one thing, just wanted to mention road. Of course, you know, the North Fairfield is still being repaved at night, so it's going very well, so that, that's good, but we also have a lane changed at Grange Hall at the end where it runs into Colonel Glenn, what normally is a right-hand lane, that right-hand lane is being extended, so right now, the right-hand lane, right-turn lane to go on to Colonel Glenn is closed, so you'll be actually turning right onto Colonel Glenn from this, you know, the straight lane, so it's blocked and marked, that's temporarily while they're whitening and building a retaining wall and that kind of stuff, so just want, be aware of that, that's a narrow and very congested area to start with, so your patience is very much needed, so, thank you.
All right. And just before we move on, you know, we've seen the Beaver Creek Strong signs different places, there've been shirts, and they may have said it at the last meeting, I don't know, but it's, it's more than just strong, it's pride, and so Beaver Creek should be very proud, so I say Beaver Creek Strong and Proud. Now, we move on, citizen comments. Anyone here tonight want to address council on any issue? Any issue at all? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.